Commissioner Tucker?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Leach?
Here.
Present.
For indication tonight, we have Mark Somerville from the Family Worship Center.
Show me please. Our gracious Father, we're thankful this evening that we can come to you at this time asking for your wisdom, for your guidance and direction for our city council as they look at the various issues of this city. We thank you tonight that your hand is upon our city and that you're blessing it. We pray you'll continue to bless each one tonight and help this meeting to go smoothly in the decisions that they need to make. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, proclamations and recognitions. We have a citizen commendation award. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Tonight we have a citizen award to give out. However, initially, the recipient was going to be here. I don't know if she's had something come up, but we'd like to go ahead and recognize her at this time. On May 21st at 9:52 PM, officers from the Eldorado Police Department were dispatched to 219 Norton Jones for the report of a disturbance involving a weapon. Prior to the arrival of officers to this location, a witness, Emily Anderson, was driving home to her residence and saw the attack taking place. Emily saw a man that was armed with an AR-15 style rifle that was choking and yelling at a female. Emily exited her vehicle and yelled at the man to stop. In response, the suspect broke off from the attack and began walking away. Miss Anderson placed herself in immediate danger without regard to her own safety to stop this violent attack. Her actions undoubtedly saved the victim from imminent danger. The suspect in this case was apprehended moments after the incident occurred by Sergeant Haynes and his fellow officers. On behalf of the Eldorado Police Department, we would like to present Emily Anderson with the Citizen Commendation Award. Since she's not here tonight, we will make contact with her and we will get this award presented to her. She is aware of it, but for whatever reason, she couldn't make it tonight. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. We appreciate it. We have our annual independent auditor presentation by Adams Brown CPA.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Hollingshed. I know some of you have heard from me in the past. I know I don't go through this in detail. We would be here for a very long night, but I will do the high-level items on it and kind of just give you a brief overview of it. I'm first going to go through the bound copy, and I'd like for you to turn over to page one, which is in the actual financial section. The first part of the report is written by management, and I do encourage, if you don't want to read through the whole audit, reading through those sections because it is a recap. And so, management has done a really good job going through and recapping the year for you, so I do encourage you to read through those. But on page one is where we start with the independent auditor's report. And at the very, very beginning, the opinion is right there for you. We have given you an unmodified opinion on the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information. And that is the highest opinion you can receive. We basically are stating that we do not believe there are any material misstatements in the financials. And within this letter, we also go into detail what responsibilities we have versus what responsibilities of management. I think it's always good to read through that because sometimes there's confusion in what an audit actually is doing. And then the next several pages are the actual financial statements. I'm not going to read through the individual numbers, but I would like for you to turn over to some of the footnotes. Just I want to point out, every balance sheet number pretty much has a footnote that corresponds that gives more detail. But on page 37, I just want to point out the new standards that went into place during the year. We had quite a few applied that this year, but the big one was the lease standard, as many of you may be aware. So, that took up a lot of time of management to get that lease standard into the financial statements this year. And then also on this page and on page 38, you will see the new standards that are also coming out that will also go into effect in the next couple of years. Then if you turn to page 39, along with the financial statements themselves, we also look at compliance with Kansas statutes. We also look at the fund balance of each fund. We did have a deficit net position, and this has been every year since the Lake loan, but we do still have a deficit net position at $14,884 at the end of the year. That should get better with the accrued interest hopefully changing. And then we also had a deficit net position in total for the business funds of 1 million, over 1 million. And then our construction fund had a deficit fund balance of 123,000. And typically, that's because the project hasn't been reimbursed yet. We also look at budget to actual expenditures, and we did have some budget violations this year. They were small violations, but we still have to note them. So, the compressed natural gas fund was over by 150. The data processing fund was over by 22,774, and the library fund was over by 3,00631. So, those are the only statute violations that we have during the year. And then the other thing I would like to point out is Note 4 and Note 7, these are the new lease footnotes. Just to kind of give you an idea of what it took to put this into place this year, it's a lot of work. So, kudos to your team for getting that done this year. Any questions on the financials themselves? Do you want me to go into detail on any specific page or any specific footnote?
Overall, in good shape?
Yes, overall in good shape. And actually, the governance letter, that's at the front of your binder. This is to let you know if we had any difficulties with management, if we encountered anything while performing the audit. We did not have any issues. We also go over anything that we recommend to them, just internal control-wise. Nothing major. We just have some minor recommendations for them. Most of them, we've actually had last year as well, and they're working on them. The big one is, of course, and this is just, as you can see, this is kind of a beast to put together. And so, just always staying in front of making sure that their accrued numbers have the supporting documentation to get to that number. We had to make some minor modifications, but nothing material.
Were there any adjusting entries made at the end of the year?
We did have adjusting entries, but not material. And a lot of those were with the leases, just getting them into the system for the first year. We had the data. We just had to make the adjustments to get them in there. So, hopefully going forward, it'll be easier on management and on us.
There's really nothing easy about that lease piece.
No, there really isn't. The other piece that is in your report is this year, the government came out with, because a lot of small cities were being, actually entities, were being hit with a single audit from those ARPA funds. If you expended over 750,000, the government, federal government came out with a new examination. If you only hit that 750 because you got ARPA funding, they allowed you to do a separate examination, which isn't quite as detailed as a single audit. In most cases, you would have to audit multiple programs with the single audit, whereas this only allowed you to just audit the ARPA. So, you will see this extra letter in there. We did not have any findings or any compliance issues on the ARPA funding. So, the letter is just to let you know that. Anything else? Any questions for me?
Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
And thank you to management, too. They do a great job getting us everything well in advance, and it's a lot, so we appreciate that, too.
We do have a pretty awesome staff here.
You do.
Thank you. I don't have my agenda with the public comments. Stand by.
You've got a consent agenda.
Yeah, we've got no public comment. This new system doesn't have the public comment statement. Still trying to go back and find one. Next on the agenda is public comments. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes in any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Is there anyone here who'd like to make public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the approval of City Commission meeting minutes from June 19th, 2023, special City Commission meeting minutes from June 21st, 2023, and special City Commission meeting minutes from July 12th, 2023, along with appropriation ordinance number 05-23 in the amount of $6,308,775.28, and appropriation ordinance 06-23 in the amount of $1,017,425.95. We're also considering the approval, or the acceptance of the Eldorado Main Street Downtown Master Plan, the authorization for sanitary sewer improvements on West Locust Avenue, the authorization for sidewalk improvements at 119 West Ash Street, project number 613, and our intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but I'd please add a cereal malt beverage license for Burger Co. at 117 West Second.
And a cereal malt beverage license for Burger Co.
These are due today, and they're coming up quickly.
Do I have a motion to approve that?
I move we approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's nothing in old business, so we'll move on to new business. Agenda item number 14, special use permit for daycare facility at 107 North Main Street.
Yes, Commissioner. Planning, the planning commission held a public hearing on June 22nd to consider allowing a special use permit for daycare facility at 107 North Main Street. That property is currently in C2 Central Business District. They held that public hearing and voted five to one to recommend approval to you all this evening. Representation of applicants here this evening, if you have any specific questions about it. There was a lot of due diligence done on behalf of branches prior to this application for a special use permit. So, within your agenda packets this evening, you'll see plans, you'll see conceptual approvals from KDHE, conceptual approvals from the State Bar Marshal's Office, and kind of a business background how they plan to operate.
Did they have to meet any historical qualifications on the front of the building?
So, they had done that prior to this application.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if there'll be any exterior modifications because of this, but that'll all be handled with staff by the time they open it.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
I move to approve an ordinance case number 23-05, SGP for requesting special use permit for daycare center at 107 North Main.
Second.
Question.
Motion is second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes. I would like to ask about the playground. I think that would be a David question. This David. Pat David.
David Stewart, Gravity Works Architecture, 101 South Star, Eldorado, Kansas.
Good evening, David.
Good evening, Matt.
The playground. Is that going out far enough to the west that it's going to block Edward D. Jones's building?
It's our understanding that the, that the property line extends eight feet beyond the current west face of the building, which encompasses that existing ramp and platform essentially out to those transformers that exist. We have modified the playground area to accommodate exiting that, that the adjacent property owner seems to have been enjoying on this property. So...
But they still have access.
We've accommodated that.
Foot path access or parking access?
The parking is unaffected by, by the playground area. There was an exit on the north face toward the west corner of this property that, that would have actually exited into the, to the original proposed playground, and we've simply modified that corner and increased required areas by other means in order to, in order to mitigate that concern.
Okay, so on the back of the building, you've got all that natural stone.
Yes.
And then you run into a wall of brick and plywood over, I'm assuming, a doorway.
Correct.
Is that part of this building also?
It is, and it's intended to be demolished, at which point that portion opens up to be made available for the playground.
Okay. Now I can picture it in my mind.
Yeah, except that single-story portion that you see back there.
Yeah.
That transitions to the red brick. There's, there's a pretty substantial steel beam that holds up the second story that you can see.
That's good.
Beyond that to the east. It's probably good.
Yeah.
It's, it's been doing work for a lot of years, so... But yeah, essentially, the, that, that single-story portion will get, will get taken down and opened up back to the second-story portion you can see beyond. That will become the new building face in that corner to create space as required by KDHE for the playground.
Okay. I can, I can picture it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
For doing that. It's awesome. Professional Services Agreement with JEO Consulting for Transportation Planning Services.
Yes, Commissioners. The city went through the process of procuring RFQs for qualified design professionals to help steer us through the transportation master plan. Last time the city of Eldorado did a transportation master plan was in 2005. A number of things have changed. Most of the recommended projects out of that 2005 plan have been accomplished. And so, moving into the next direction, we feel like we need to proceed with this plan. It will be kind of going off the buildup of the KTA-K254 plan, which is all the complete that the city is partnering with the Turnpike and KDOT on. We also have the K254 plan, safety plan, that's getting ready to kick off. Really, what this document will do is help guide the city in making decisions as we grow industrially, as we grow residentially, where arterial roads need to be placed, where collectors, where residential-type streets would be adequate. The last thing we want to do is have a development be built out and not be the adequate roadway for... We have things in town, I'm sure you all commute Sixth Avenue quite often. It's nearing capacity. What does the city need to do as that grows with heavier traffic for an alternate truck load, things of that nature? So, this master plan will look at everything transportation-related, even pedestrians. So, we'll have them look at bypass extensions, walkability, things of that nature.
Are they going to look for an extension on the southwest trafficway?
Yeah, there's going to be all kinds of concepts that are included in that. It could be a southwest bypass from, you know, Boyer Road to Paverhill or something. Who knows? But it is going to look at that. We are really restricted as far as east-west roads and north-south roads, arterial's that carry a lot of traffic, so we are going to have to explore alternate routes.
Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with JEO to provide transportation master plan.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 16, professional services agreement with PEC for pavement condition indexing services.
So, originally, conceptually, this was going to be packaged in with the transportation master plan. And what pavement conditioning indexing is, our biggest asset this city has to maintain are our streets. They cost a lot of money. There's 88 miles of street out there in our system. With the efforts we've done in the last number of years with sanitary sewer, water, understanding all that infrastructure, the next logical step for, was to understand our pavement condition. What we have today is a map that my staff and Public Works helps maintain, but it's only as good as the data that day. And it's very cumbersome to maintain. It's not very user-friendly. So, what this project will entail is looking at a snapshot of our streets as they are today and put them in a GIS-based system where staff can easily update the street conditions as the streets age, where we need to focus crack seal, where we need to focus ceiling, where we need to focus milling overlays. It'll give us a better picture to project capital improvement plans for the future. So, we think it's a really important tool that we need, we need to add to forecast and be able to plan for the future. So, as I mentioned earlier, this was conceptually going to be part of the transportation master plan. However, we thought JEO was stronger in the roadway network planning, and PEC was a little stronger in this pavement conditioning. So, we split those two apart to kind of have the best on both of these, as far as we felt when we interviewed them and reviewed the qualifications.
Did they, are they just going to do a GIS of all the streets, but they're not going to tell you what to do with the streets? They used to be not very good about that.
So, what's, what's really neat about it is every street tile will be videoed. So, with that, we'll be able to pull that data out, look at pavement condition.
They're going to do the recommendation, or you and Brad going to decide what you want?
So, we'll come up with our own index.
Okay.
Our own numbers.
That's good.
There's, there's multiple American Paving Association, American Public Works Association, all these different criterias and rankings. We're going to come up with something that makes sense real right now.
Okay.
That doesn't have too many numbers that no one can understand.
Well, PEC kind of struggled with this, and that's why I was wondering whether they passed on some towns which are considered county, so... That's why I'm saying, I'm saying.
Do I have a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yep, sure.
I noticed the cost is X hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. That, we, we got the agenda item in prior to getting the agreements, just for scheduling factors. And in your packet behind that is the actual contract for the work.
Does it have a dollar amount in it?
Yes, a lump sum of $70,000.
$70,000?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, it's even better than X hundred thousand?
Yeah, better than six X's.
Yeah.
Or five X's.
If there's no further discussion, I'd take a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign an agreement with PEC for the pavement condition index project.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 17, professional services agreement with PEC for KDOT connecting link improvement program, North Main Street Mill and Overlay Project.
Yes, Commissioner, this is a, what they call a C clip project. The city of Eldorado was awarded a grant from KDOT for the overlay of Main Street from Sixth Avenue all the way up to McCollum Road. This contract would have PEC put the plans together and submit them to KDOT on our behalf. The city would still be responsible for construction inspection on the project. Their proposed fee for this work is $29,500.
You ready for a motion?
I am.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign PEC agreement for the preservation project of North Main from Sixth Avenue to McCollum Road.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, agenda item number 18, McDonald's Stadium Turf Bid Approval.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As you're aware, we sent a request for proposals for the replacement of the Turf in the Dallas Stadium. We received four proposals back. Staff has reviewed all four. We believe that one of the bidders did not provide enough information to be seriously considered, so that left us with three to seriously consider. And upon review, you've seen in your staff report, the bid amounts and staff's recommendation. If you have any questions that you may have.
So, I do have a couple of questions. As I look down through this, I guess when you say you had, one, one of the bidders didn't like provide enough information to be seriously considered... As I look down through the checklist of the requirements, I mean, to kind of recap what got us to where we are today, we had sent out, we'd gone to RFP once, and the RFP was too open-ended, or you guys decided to go back out and be more specific in the RFP with specific requirements. And as I look down through your checklist, it doesn't look like all the bidders met all those requirements as you guys specified. And so, we've gone through this process twice now, and in this process, we only have one bidder that, that provided a complete RFP answer, is what I'm seeing here.
That's the belief of staff as we've reviewed them. All of them were slightly different, a little bit difficult to read and understand for lay persons like us. We were able to find the information as noted fairly easily where it says yes on your checklist. The other information may be hidden in there that we didn't quite grasp. We do have some email correspondence from some bidders that the things that they did not have yeses by are included in their bid price. So, that's the best answer I can give you to that this evening.
I mean, if we're trying to get apples to apples, we're trying to, I mean, we, we put out some very specific standards. As I look down through your list, I look at the things like eight, eight replacement plan, eight replacement panels. We've got yes on some, no on some. I mean, that seems like that would be something that...
Yes. I agree with you. And that was one that...
Costly.
Yeah, we didn't see in two of the proposals.
I mean, what my concern is, is we, you know, I look at the recommendation from staff, which as I read down through that, the staff report, that's the low bid recommendation. But my concern is, is that does the low bid meet the needs and meet the standards of the RFP? And if not, then we need to find the bid that does, because we can't go back out to RFP again. I mean, we're, we keep kicking this cane down the road. As I look at the checklist that you guys have provided, there's one vendor that clearly answered and identified everything that we asked. Am I reading that correctly?
That, that's, that is how staff interpreted going through the proposals. Again, some of the information that we have listed as no could be hidden in there, and we just couldn't find it in terms of how it's worded or the technical... we just couldn't find it in terms of how it's worded or the technical terminology that each company might use. It's a little different from what we sent out in our proposal, in our requirements. The one that has the majority of the yeses, we were able to very clearly find and define in the proposal.
So it's not, it's not the majority of the yeses, it's all the yeses.
Yes.
Every question you guys asked.
That is true. The bottom in A were no alternatives.
So those that have blank lines that have nothing, neither yes nor no.
They were, we were told that they met those requirements and were included in their price, but we could not necessarily find them specifically to meet what we sent.
So, Mr. Mayor, it looks like one company did their due diligence, and the other ones are just out there.
From the outside looking in, that's.
Yeah, it's the way it looks.
As I read through the.
That's why it's higher.
Right.
So for example, for like ballast material, for a non-person, what is ballast material?
My understanding of the ballast material is part of the turf and components that make up the playing surface.
Okay.
I failed to bring my bid document. I have a staff report and checklist document. Failed to bring that bid document that has that specifically listed, but we had a specific measurement that we asked for, that we were able to find from one vendor and unable, in the bid that was sent to us, unable to specifically find it. Again, it may be in there, but we were unable to find it.
So, for example, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question for a person out there?
We've got staff here.
Okay, or, but he says he can't find it. What I'm kind of curious is, I've talked to a guy that says he met all those, and it was in the proposal. Did we give him a chance to say, okay, this is a problem? Where did you meet it at?
Yes, we asked some questions via email. All of those went through the city clerk's office, and again, we were told that everything met our requirements.
Can we change the recommendation and go with Ellis?
You can do, we can do whatever we want. I'm just, I just am concerned that we've got one vendor that met the standards of the R F P of the bid, and the other three, according to the checklist, did not. And so we, yes, Brad, you can.
Well, it always seems like there's always been some issue with that stadium. And if we got a chance to do it right, let's do it right, and don't just pick the cheapest person to do it. That's what happens.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
I guess I hate to spend another hundred thousand dollars because we could not find something.
Well, I mean, the flip side of that is, we have, we have a vendor that actually answered the R F P.
I'm not arguing with that. I'm just saying I don't understand why.
I mean, I'd like to trust our staff did the best they could. I mean, they're the ones that put together the R F P. If they couldn't find it, not saying that it's not there, but, I mean, you know, we, whenever we would do the job, if you asked for something, I made sure that you could find that, for sure. Like, if you asked me for that ballast material, that might be number one on my list. Like, you're going to see that I included that, you know? And so that's what I'm afraid of, is that, you know, we don't go with the one that has everything, and then they're like, oh yeah, that wasn't included, sorry, you know? And then, because I don't know how you can compare these to each other when we have, you know, fifty percent no's. And I don't know which one you threw out, so I don't, you know, so I'm not really sure. But I mean, there's a lot of no's on all three of those.
I'll say this, when you asked me how many questions.
I'm sorry, you're out of order. You're out of order. Sir, you're out of order. This is, this is a commission meeting.
I have an answer that Kevin gave right here.
You're, you're.
He said he knew the ballast.
You're out of order in this conversation. We're, we didn't invite the vendors here. Vendors had an opportunity. In the process here, and what my concern here, one of my concerns is the process, is our staff sends out an R F P. They have R F P meetings, they have R F P question and answer opportunities, and they go through this process. And the vendors then, rather than, rather than effectively working this and getting the yes answers where they need to be on these things, they're then turn around and contact commissioners who aren't, should never be part of this R F P process. That's not our job, is to be part of the R F P process. Our job is for, is to direct staff to set standards and go to R F P. We went to R F P one time, and it wasn't good enough, and so we went to R F P a second time, and we've got answers back. And those answers, to Kelly's point, were clearly defined in one of the, from one of the vendors, and clearly accessible to staff as they read through the R F P answers, is the way I read this table. So that's, there's nothing, there's nothing hidden or potentially that got missed, not that there's anything hidden. There's nothing that potentially got missed, because you were clearly able to find it in the R F P answer, I'm assuming, is why you answered yes on these pieces, or no on these pieces, or left in blank.
Yes, and more, there were two and a half of us that reviewed this. Tabitha was a part of it, she wasn't part of all of it, but there were two staff members that went through it in order to try to make sure that one didn't miss and the other one could find. Again, that information may be in there, it just wasn't clearly defined for us to find, being laypeople when it comes to turf. Our job is to make it playable on a daily basis. We don't manufacture it or install it.
And so the standards that you built for their R F P were standards that.
Yes.
Playable standards that you guys have opted to go with.
We also put in a bid on, and if we don't meet the standards, then we lose our bonding, so you guys are covered. So do what question one.
I think we will.
Do you guys have any additional questions for Kevin?
Thanks for everything you did.
Thank you, guys, for going through this twice.
I mean, I trust what you've done, so.
Do I have a motion of any kind?
You want to go with Ellis?
I mean, I, my comfort level is going with the person that clearly defined and answered the questions.
I move to award the bid an amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars to Ellis for the replacement of the turf on the infield of McDonald's Stadium upon successful negotiation of contract by the city manager.
My second.
Further discussion? Motion seconded. No further discussion. Seeing that there is none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Votes four to one. Next item on the agenda is one cent sales tax ballot question resolution.
Commissioner, the resolution, we can refer you all time. Will place a one cent sales tax question on the November general election ballot, which will be, I think, November seventh of twenty twenty-three. The one cent sales tax that currently exists, however, does not sunset until September, the end of September of twenty twenty-four. So you might wonder why we are moving this forward now. The reason is, this general election is the only general election that is between now and when the sales tax sunsets. The city would have a couple of other opportunities. Those are primary elections. Generally, the city is trying to get this ballot question on the general election, because the most, the majority of people, all registered voters in El Dorado can vote in the general election versus the primary, well, you guys say. More people vote in the general election, I guess that's what they're saying. So, this resolution has been put together after considerable discussion with the sales tax advisory committee, as well as receiving input from the governing body in two work sessions. So what this resolution will do is it will provide the following question for a one cent sales tax for the November general election. Shall the city's retailers' sales tax in the amount of one percent be extended from and having the first date of October twenty twenty-four in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, with the first one point six five million dollars to be allocated annually for primary tax reduction, the next seven hundred thousand dollars to be allocated annually for street rehabilitation, and the remaining dollars to be distributed per ordinance, which retailers' sales tax shall continue to flow for a certain time? So in essence, this makes some pretty significant changes from our existing sales tax. The first being that the amount set aside for roads increases from six hundred thousand dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars. The second major change, well, let me go back. The first major change is that this will not be up for renewal in five years if it's approved by voters. It will be what we would call a continuous sales tax, and it will only be subject to change based on the same method to which voters implemented it, which will be to a resolution like you're adopting or considering tonight. Then it would have to go through the voters through a ballot, and then they'd have to vote affirmatively to make those changes, to make that happen. So in essence, it would be a continuous sales tax. It would not come up for election in five years, as it has historically done since its original adoption in twenty, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety. The second major change, as I have already articulated, is that we increase the street money from six hundred thousand dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars. The third major change is that the hundred thousand dollars that had historically been set aside for economic development goes away. Those dollars then go into the excess sales tax pot, and then the remaining funds that exceeds one point six five million dollars and the seven hundred thousand dollars, which is two point three five million dollars, anything above that amount will go to the excess sales tax program, which the commission can then allocate based upon the process that is articulated by ordinance. Presently, that process is the excess sales tax committee receives recommendations. They make a recommendation based on those projects to the commission. Commission reviews those and then makes a decision on what projects will receive funding and which ones will not. In essence, those are the primary changes. It should be noted that the excess sales tax funds can be utilized for anything that's established, that's actually authorized by ordinance, and that ordinance can be subject to review by the city commission at present, at any point in time. So those are the changes that are up for, that are up for this question. Will take any questions that you all may have?
I'd offer a little bit additional background. You know, we've had a pretty extensive discussion amongst the commission at work sessions about the one cent sales tax. We sent out a survey, got some great feedback on the survey, and we had a committee help put together some recommendations as well. We've taken information from all of those pieces, right? So from the survey, from the commission's kind of opinion and findings, and from the, from the committee that we put together to get to where we're at today. So they all differ a little bit from, you know, in their findings, but it gets us to where we're at today. Some of the takeaways, I think, from the conversations that we've had with staff during work sessions that I think are key to note are, by moving it to perpetual sales tax or ongoing sales tax, it really allows us to, I think, be more effective, allows staff to be more effective and this commission to be more effective at long-term planning. You know, we all felt like there needed to increase more money in the roads, on the roadside, and we're able to get there. Plus, we have opportunities then as we move forward, if other road projects come up, for those to go before the excess sales tax, to be potentially use excess sales tax money to be used for those. And then, you know, if there's any concern about the hundred thousand dollars being moved from the economic development piece, you know, I think that the general consensus amongst the commission was, as we've, in the past, as we've needed that money otherwise, whether it was in that excess sales tax or in the sales tax money or not, we've been able to find, to find that money. And again, those are projects that can come up through excess sales tax, or they can come up through general budgeting. So I think we're, this commission, at least based on our conversation at the last work session, is confident that this is, this is the best route to go, and that we'll be able to have more effective planning and be able to allocate some more money to roads through this process. And if I read that wrong, you guys let me know, but that was kind of my takeaway from our conversations. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve a resolution to submit to qualified electors of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, the proposition of continuing a one cent retailer.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have nothing under discussion items, so we'll move on to city commission advisory board updates, and we're going to start with Commissioner Tett.
The library board, we did have a meeting, pretty much what, just, they've got a couple events. Summer's pretty busy for them, honestly, but they have the aerial performers, was rescheduled, was supposed to have been in July. I think it like stormed that day, it was like a Friday. That's scheduled for eight-four, seems pretty interesting, seeing people that did the fire breathing, if anybody went to that. My kid says, pretty exciting, so. Then they have a summer movie night at the end of the month. I don't know the name of the movie, so. It's S seven or six, if you want to go, but I don't have a movie right now. I have everything else, so that's it.
Commissioner Lewis?
I don't have anything to report.
We had a really good meeting with El Dorado experiences, and what's interesting is, is we've got it lined up on what the performers are going to be. I think some young lady's going to wait to give an announcement here when we get everything totally lined up, but it's really exciting. We talked a lot about the parade that's coming up with Butler Community College, and we're having a meeting with them on Friday. So a lot of good things happening and looking forward to it. We've got, though, we got to work down on the Children's Week, too, so. You've done a good job on juggling a whole bunch of balls, young lady. So that's all I've got.
So I have a question about experience of El Dorado. Have we, do we start with posting out there? We made any progress in?
We are conducting second interviews with a couple of candidates, hopefully we'll make an offer.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Walken.
Parks and Rec met during a commission work session. I got there in time for it to adjourn. So I'll have to read the minutes to get caught up on it. El Dorado Main Street, I was shopping this weekend and used the minutes out of my purse to fan myself, and it is in some shopping bag in the sunroom. So, no, I don't have any report.
Fantastic. I don't have anything new from the F A B C, and I don't think I have anything else. So, city managers report.
All right. The city received one proposal for city council services. We received that from E B Legal, which is a new firm, although we are experienced, or have the pleasure, we're familiar with the attorney, as is Ashley Lynn Scott, who's decided to lead Mark Regal and venture out on her own. So she is creating or starting her own legal firm, E B Legal. She submitted the only proposal, so we will finalize a professional services agreement and bring that to you all for consideration at a meeting in the near future. The planning commission has been, as you all have charged, the planning commission to review temporary signage regulations. One of the challenges that it's kind of ran into is finding enough people to meet quorum. It's my understanding that we have two vacancies in the planning commission. One is an outside the city limits member, and the other is inside the city limits member. So if you know of someone that is interested in serving on either one of those two spots, we need to make those positions filled, so you might be thinking about that as we move forward. The housing needs assessment committee has conducted focus groups. They had a handful of focus groups scheduled, and based on the input provided from those that participated, we have a draft stakeholder assessment. So in essence, some findings that will be further kind of massage, as we're supposed to collect some data and get some additional information together for that. So that process is moving forward as we continue to gather input and get that information ready to move to the next stage of that process. Staff's worked on a proposal to look at leasing vehicles, specifically vehicles that, well, not equipment, so basically vehicles that we drive around from site to site. We're also looking at police cars. Probably the exception to this is fire engines. We probably won't. probably won't lease those, but we will be looking at options for that. So, they'll, the group that's working on that will be putting the final touches on that, and then we'll bring that to you all for approval. That, I should note that by transitioning to a leasing option, it does allow us to hit more vehicles for the same amount of money as if we were buying, but it will take a couple of years for us to transition into the full fleet, because, you know, for year one, we'll only be doing X amount of vehicles, year two will have X plus the next year, and then year three, we'll have the two years plus a little bit more. So, will take a little bit to get up to full speed and the full cost, but it is something that will allow us to reduce not only our ownership expenses such as repairs, but it will also allow us to have the best operating piece of equipment or piece of vehicle for us to do our jobs, and make sure we have the best operating stuff available. Let's see, preliminary engineering continues for our base ground projects, the preliminary engineering for Costa Creek Santeria Sewer is nearly completed, and we are currently waiting on some information from Evergine to get the alignments, the easements put in. Other than that, most of our other projects, the utilities department is moving along pretty smoothly, with our filter consoles being installed at the water treatment plant, and the ultraviolet light replacement was put in at the water renovation facility. So, we've got a lot of projects going on, but things moving pretty smoothly, and...
With the deluge of rain that we had last Friday, South Main was flooded, North Main wasn't, and is there a way you could cut that behind the tax office to drain that water away from there? It was making traffic stop on South Main, because it was pretty deep there for a little bit, and it went down real, real quick.
Public Works has done a number, makes some pretty significant improvements over the last few years down in that area, so, we'll mention that too as well, I'm sure they were out on it Friday, giving it back up.
The, the police were, they were watching it, but that's, it was pretty high for a little bit.
Yeah, it's one of those situations where, you know, the volume of water in a short period of time, it's just something that, you know, most of our streets were built to accommodate that, and many of our storm, storm drains, you know, they're going to get inundated at some point. One would say, well, we can just design the bigger system, and unfortunately, it's one of those, one of those problems where the cost doesn't justify the means, so, you know, you can spend a lot of money on drainage for an event that may happen once every eight-hundred years, once every two-hundred years, when it happens, it's a big deal, but then it quickly goes away, but the cost alone of dealing with that situation is tens of billions of dollars in some cases.
It was, the city's drain was pouring out on the street.
Yeah.
And it was actually causing the flooding there.
Yeah, it's because somewhere else down the system was already inundated, and that water's going to go somewhere, so.
But it seemed like you could dig a trench or something to take it off to the, away from where it's flowing back towards the house back there, but it's too high, so it goes back there and dams it up, starts going forward.
The reality is true, city manager said, you know, the streets, the streets function as part of our drainage, drainage system as well, and even new streets are built so that they hold water, they detain water, you know, you're always looking at life safety and protect your private property, but to be able to accommodate storms like Friday is not realistic, not financially.
Anything else for the city manager?
That's it for me.
There's nothing else, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thanks everyone for coming out.
I thought we were supposed to have a lengthy session.
I didn't see it on...
You were not.